Scout sign. Other color march. Other color. Other constable. Other constable. Other police. Please join us in the flag of allegiance.
The flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
We are now the hour. Our colors are red, yellow, purple, green, turquoise, turquoise, gray, blue, and yellow.
Please join us in the hour.
On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty, to drive my country, and to obey the scout law, help other people at all times, to keep myself very strong, and to be aware and more wish straight.
Please join us in the hour.
As an American, I will do my best to be obedient with my outdoor manners, to be careful of fire, and consider the outdoors to be conservation minded.
Two.
Okay, you're not getting off that easy, Ben. Coming up, Ben. Bring them all back in, please. So, Ben is an Arrow Scout, and if you would just introduce yourself, how old you are, and what school you go to, all of you. So, go ahead, Ben.
My name is Ben. I work at Park Elementary in Pennerville.
My name is Swift. I work at Berthley and come to L.A.
My name is Pauline.
My name is Pauline. I go to Berthley, and I'm eleven years old.
My name is Ozzy, and I go to the five-six building, and I love.
Thank you, Ben, and the scouts. Appreciate you presenting the colors tonight, parents and scout leaders. It's a long road, and it's enjoyable, and I applaud all of you for giving yourself your time to your community and our boys. So, thank you. Now is the time for a moment of silence. I believe Tobin is going to lead this moment of silence.
Yep. This one, I think most of you already heard about Chase Selick. I think I pronounced his name correctly. He tragically passed, a member of the Hudsonville community, nineteen years old, I believe, athlete at Hudsonville High School. Being a dad with kids of this age, it hits a little different. I hate to see families go through this. Our hearts are with him and his family.
Thank you. Would everybody please have a moment of silence? May God bless us all. Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. Yeah, you want to take your colors with you. Thank you. Now it's time for public comments. If you're not on the agenda, you're free to approach a dais and state your name and address. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go right on into the consent agenda items. A little bit of a different order here. There are seven: City Commission Work Session from January fourteenth, City Commission Regular Session minutes dated January fourteenth, City Commission Work Session minutes dated January twenty-eighth, Planning Commission Meeting minutes dated January fifteenth, and I believe the city manager will speak to that briefly in his minutes, in his discussion at the end. Library Advisory Board Meeting Minutes dated January thirtieth, and the accounts payable that have been reviewed and approved by, between the meetings by the Finance Committee and the City Manager, payment of the bills in effect of four hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven cents, and the ACH seven-seven-three-four-seventy-three and sixty-three cents. That ACH is a little high because we have paid one of the installments for the property we purchased downtown, like I think it was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, right? Something like that, yeah. So, that's why that is high. Are there any questions or changes on the consent agenda items? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Mr. Mayor.
Also, I do believe there is a change to the agenda that-
Yes.
Mayor Protem is going to ask for your agenda change.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda for tonight if possible. And, City Clerk Jill, is this the paper here, Resolution twenty-five-one-eight-zero-nine, is that referencing the additional item? Okay. Do you add this officially? Do I need to read that, or do we just-
Just add it to the agenda, right?
Yeah, you can just motion to add item number seven.
Okay.
All those in favor, oh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adding that agenda item, which is Resolution twenty-five-dash-one-eight-zero-nine, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. We'll discuss that towards the end of the agenda. Moving on to departmental reports. Chief, you're up.
Good evening. Report for January. We had a busy month in January. Responded to seventy-eight calls. So, as we finished out last year with a bunch of calls, we started the new year in the same fashion. Couple of, couple of calls note, we had one structure fire on the report that actually was a trash came in, in front of the garage that extended into the garage wall, just their melting siding, but typically it's part of the structure, so that classifies that as a structure fire. And then we also responded upon expressway a few times through the blizzard, and one of them was a fairly involved vehicle that slid under a semi and started on fire, so we were up there for quite a few hours with that, and then also blocking the on-ramp and also diverting traffic off of the expressway. So, we were busy there for a few days. Also, number five personnel, just to let you know that all three cadets have started the fire academy, started the first of January, so they are well underway now, getting their feet underneath them there. They've been responding to calls with us and training, so they, all three are doing exceptionally well. And then one other chart that I put in there was the last page, and that was part of a report from Ottawa County Central Dispatch. It shows all the fire departments in Ottawa County, all twenty-one of them, and where they rank by calls. So, we were right in the middle. There are ten departments that have more than us, and ten departments that have fewer than us calls in all of Ottawa County, so for the size that we are and the call volume that we have, pretty impressive that we are in the seven hundreds for last year.
Got a question, Steve. On that chart, do the colors have to do with like the number of fires in relation to the size of the population?
No, they were just using different colors for, just to give different contrast.
Gotcha.
Can we go back to the EMS slide? It just seems like there, is there more red than normal there?
So, more red than normal would be, would mean more priority one calls, more serious calls of serious nature, and yes, January, this is actually December now, December report, did have more of those types of calls. Difficulty breathing, the weather, it's, you know, play part of that. So, whenever somebody has difficulty breathing, it's automatically priority one. If they fall, can't get up, it's priority three. So, there were just more of the more serious type calls for December.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Jack, you want to say anything, or can we?
Yeah, actually, this is something I had noticed. I mean, we all knew about it, but we just wanted to make note of it publicly. And that is, for anybody who had noticed in the MLive, there was an article on East Grand Rapids, and they're procuring a fire truck, and what they went through, the whole process, the cost, the wait time. Having to wait four years from ordering to get the fire truck and the cost of what they're getting, and for the, you know, what you and your team did and put together, being able to lock in our new fire truck in, what was it, like a year and eight or ten months approximately, plus the savings that were incurred and everything that you did, it's just phenomenal. So, I just publicly, we all publicly want to thank you for that, for the city of Hudsonville. It's wonderful.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Chief. Moving on to the Sheriff's Department. Sergeant Tamminga, welcome. Your first time here? Is this your first time in the City Hall with the-
Pardon me?
Is this your first time in the City Hall with us like this?
Like this in this context, yes.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sergeant Michael Tamminga. Clearly, I'm not Sergeant Jeff Stegenga. He had the distinct privilege after twenty-five years of January of retiring, which I'm sure all of you are fully well aware of that, and it was very, very well deserved for him. He's been a close friend of mine for most of my life. We went to school together. We grew up together, graduated together. He's a twin, I'm a twin, so we, Jeff and I had a lot in common. And so, it was sad to see him leave, but yet I'm happy for him, and I'm certain as you all are as well. Big shoes to fill here in Hudsonville with Sergeant Stegenga leading. So, so in the interim, until our organization is able to replace Jeff permanently, I currently am the sergeant in a contract position for Georgetown Township. That's my primary responsibility until in the interim, just until our sheriff and undersheriff are able to, to, to fill that spot through your promotion or level transfer permanently, I'll be in the role here supervising the deputies here in Hudsonville and engaging with the city manager and mayor as need be. So, for any needs that need to be met for the supervisory role, I'll be fulfilling that role until that, until they're able to do that. In the month of January, we also had a change of guard at the sheriff's office. Sheriff Eric DeBoer was elected last fall. He obviously took his, his, his role as the sheriff on January one and appointed a new undersheriff as well, undersheriff Dave Coke, who spent most of his law enforcement career at the Kent County Sheriff's Office. So, so we've got those two individuals steering the ship at the sheriff's office, and we're excited about that and some of the changes that we're excited for there. As far as the trends here and what happened, sheriff's office related in the city of Hudsonville, our calls for service were right around the average. We had two hundred calls for service in January, which was one more than we had in the month of December, so. But just looking back at the trends at this time of year, that is right spot on for what we're averaging for calls for service in the city of Hudsonville. One thing I'd like to note, too, I've been working in the Hudsonville, I've lived in the Hudsonville area for most of my life. I live in the city. I live right here on East Street. I care about this community, and one of the biggest things that this community is concerned about is traffic. Not just from the residents, but those from Georgetown Township, Jamestown Township, that travel through the city. This is one thing that the greater Hudsonville area is deeply concerned about, and rightfully so. We have so many kids. We have such a great community with kids playing and all of those things. People care about the traffic and the concerns that might come with traffic-related issues. And that's so different in the city of Hudsonville. Outside of our medicals, traffic-related complaints, crashes, in addition to our, just calls for service related to traffic-related issues are right up there with our medical calls for service. Actually, even more, those two combined. It's a big issue for the community, and our enforcement, our traffic contacts from the deputies here in Hudsonville were great in the month of January, a hundred and thirty-seven, up from a hundred and two in December. That's with a lot of snow and a lot of slow-traveling days on the streets here in Hudsonville. So, the deputies are doing a really good job of educating our community and about traffic. We're here. We want our traffic traveling to be safe in the city of Hudsonville. They're doing a great job of that, so. Yeah, truly all I had. Any questions for me?
Hearing none. Thank you, Sergeant, and we'll see you next month, I guess.
Thank you.
Now, are you, do you have any office hours here?
Um, no, but I can definitely work that out. I mean, that's, that's, Tyler and I have been talking about kind of what that looks like, and so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Dave?
Good evening. So, a couple things I want to highlight on my report. The two traffic accidents, and the fire chief mentioned traffic accidents. Part of my team was out there to help close the, close the ramp, and also instead of standing in the road to wave people off the exit ramp, we get the key to the traffic light, we just work the button, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Can I borrow that?
What's that?
Can I borrow that?
Nope.
Worth a try.
You can get it right after he gets a badge. No, that's something that we've started doing over the past few years, because usually it takes us five people to control an intersection at the bottom of the ramp, because we're getting people to go against a red light, right, or stop on a green light or something. Once we, you know, start working the traffic light with the box, one person, and they're out of the road. The downside is we can't get our vehicles next to the control box, so I have to stand out and call. But we had enough crew that we could, we could rotate that.
So, are all, are all your guys trained in this?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, we all know how to do it, and I think, I've got a couple newer people that haven't actually done it in the field yet, but we do that during the fair, so I make sure I rotate them through that position so they'll get a little bit of experience. It's easy to do. They just need to get over the jitters of controlling the traffic. And J.J., my deputy director, since I was out of state, he ran both those incidents and gave you a good report on him, so. And you all are good hands, so I'll look at you here. The other thing I want to highlight, I think he mentioned in the last meeting that we have windlink now in the, in the O.C. That's a way of sending email over amateur radio. So, what they did at the January meeting of my department is, my team's been trained extensively in how to use that. So, if there's a disaster, and we could, we could send out basically just health and welfare messages. Somebody could say, hey, can you email this person and tell them I'm okay? So, if the cell service is down, the towers won't down, or something like that, and we don't have internet access, we can, we've got a, when it's up on the tower, does they much have amateur radio, and they can send emails that way. We can also send, send forms up to the county or the state with the caution that nothing is encrypted, because amateur radio by law can't be encrypted, so we make sure we don't send anything highly sensitive. But it's at least a way to give people a method of, and give them a little bit.
Now, are those emails can only be sent by your staff from downstairs in the emergency center, or is it all computers in City Hall?
It would be down in the, or it's the operations center. It would have a computer connected to amateur radio down there.
And does the Sheriff's Department have the same ability? Just, just you?
Yeah, the only, the only place in this building where we have ham radio is down in the O.C. They have two radios down there.
Are other communities doing this, or are we new to that?
I can't say for certain. I think the county might have some, some windlink capability. I don't know of other agencies within the county that are doing that, because we're the only municipal E.N. department in the county.
Any questions from the commissioners? Keep up the good work, Dave. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Moving on to the City Treasurer's monthly report. Andrew, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I don't think there's anything terribly notable. I can go for questions if anybody has anything, but it's pretty standard month. I wasn't really, yeah, nothing terribly big went on, like we made all the bond payments last month, so we paid on like quality-of-life bond and the Gypen Plaza and also the D.P.W. building, but other than that, a pretty typical month here.
And what's the number on the bottom right?
Uh, let's see here. Forty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars.
And what is that number?
The interest that we made last month, so, yeah, still doing pretty well. We're at four point five percent overall still on our investments, even though it's around three point five is now the going rate, so, yeah. So, the strategy of, you know, lettering them over the two years is now, you know, paying off on the back end.
Any questions? It's for the treasurer. Thanks, Andrew. Moving on to the Economic Development Director Report. I guess we're going to talk about the grant tracker, too. Is that correct?
All right, add a notec if you want. The two that I've worked on so far, and by worked on, I mean taken the information from Mary at the library and from Chief are the two grants you see at the bottom there. So, yes, I did take that grant library work in the last few months, rolling into month four here with the city. So, excited to continue and build on those responsibilities, but those were the two grants that I've been part of so far. We should be hearing back on that library grant hopefully by March third, I believe is the deadline. So, hopefully got some funds coming in from that, and then as different departments, whether that's my department or different departments throughout the city, as we find grant opportunities to apply for, I'll be the one tracking that and doing the follow-up. I'll leave the finance stuff to Andrew, but happy to take over the administrative side of this and provide that information for all of you here and for our community and residents as well. So, that's the update. If there is any questions on the grant tracker. But outside of that, just a few things that as I roll into month four on the job that I wanted to share. Some things that I've done, some things that are still in progress, and then a couple of things in the queue as well. So, as we previously discussed at our working session a couple of weeks ago, as the DDA director, I'm writing a template for proposals for our development properties that we have available through the city, through the DDA. That has been reviewed by our city legal team. We actually met today with our representatives from the M.E.D.C. and our redevelopment-ready, this certified community representative from the M.E.D.C. as well, so we've got their thoughts and comments on that. So, that should be good to go with our first property being the Triangle property out before the end of the month. So, excited to push that out onto our networks with the M.E.D.C. and with Lake Shore Advantage as well. And then as part of that, some of the supplemental information that's included in those RFPs broadly, since they're all focused on the downtown. We worked with the Gibbs Planning Group a few years ago, twenty-twenty, and then twenty-twenty-one, for a series of reports. They did a couple of market reports on just our overall market analysis, mostly focusing on retail and residential within the downtown, as well as a city center focus, thinking about the Village Green and accompanying parking analysis with that, and then what our office market looks like, both downtown and across the city. So, I read through those reports and essentially summarized them into one document. So, there is an executive summary of those executive summaries of those four reports into one combined document that I'm happy to share with all of you. And then a couple of events and things going on, both on the economic development side and on the downtown development side. On March fifth, I will be attending the Michigan Downtown Association Spring Workshop. That's in downtown Lansing. So, they've got programming on placemaking, public art, TIF districts, business retention and expansion focused on the downtown area. So, excited to be a part of that community and see what opportunities I can learn from there. Part of that, but separate from it, the Michigan Downtown Association, from what I've heard in social circles and professional circles of people that I work with in economic development, a lot of their programming and events happen on the central and eastern side of the state. So, a few folks within Kent and Ottawa County have put together a group called West Michigan Leaders, and that's similar to the Michigan Downtown Association, but focused a little bit more on the west side of the state. So, we'll actually be hosting them. I would be hosting them as the DDA director here in Hudsonville on Tuesday, March eleventh. So, we'll have anywhere from ten to twenty professionals from Ottawa and Kent County focused on economic and community development and downtown development. So, we'll be having an informal lunch on. Folks can grab lunch from one of our restaurants downtown, and then we'll be meeting in the co-working space at Terrace Square for a short presentation on what we're doing here in Hudsonville and the projects that we've got going on. I was excited that when the leader of that group reached out to me, they said that their last meeting was in Holland in December, and they were really hoping they could connect with somebody in Hudsonville. So, excited to be able to host that. Happy to share more information as that comes out. If anyone would care to join us for the lunch or informal networking and the walking tour that we'll be doing after that, I encourage you to be there. Again, that's on Tuesday, March eleventh.
What time would that be?
That is going to be scheduled to start at eleven forty-five. Right in Terrace Square. And then through the DDA, right now, we've got the match on main grant program through the M.E.D.C. that's open. So, any business that falls within the downtown district is available to apply for this grant funding opportunity. It's a ten percent match, up to twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm happy to share more information. I've got a couple of different documents and one-pagers on what sorts of businesses can apply. It could be anything from healthcare to retail to resi-, or not residential, sorry, commercial enterprises, anything like that. The deadline for businesses to send their application to me is Monday, March seventeenth, and then we'll be reviewing those applications at the DDA meeting that week to decide the two businesses or applications that we want to submit on behalf of the DDA. And then I'm creating a one-pager both for our businesses and for our residents, as this is a new department for the city. So, on the business side, kind of understanding and helping fill that missing middle of information, working with entrepreneurs to connect them to business resources, whether that's SBA, SBDC, or in the world of economic development broadly, kind of the alphabet soup, as we like to call it, whether that's mishdo, M.E.D.C., M.D.N.R., different things like that, and same thing for residents to understand what, what economic and community development are, what those resources are, to be able to have a holistic view of what this work is on a regular basis. And then, as I said, we met with our M.E.D.C. and RRC representatives today. We were informed that we did get a full-time, she's been with the M.E.D.C. for a few years, Sue DeBries. I was fortunate enough to work with her in Moncom County the last two years, so it's great to be able to work with someone that I already have a working rapport with, but she is our full-time community development representative. So, earlier today after our meeting, Sarah Stephens and I walked her through downtown, talked about some of those projects that we've got going on, some of the properties that we're looking to develop. So, always nice to have that opportunity to sit in person and show them the physical properties that we're talking about. And I think it just gives the M.E.D.C. some more skin in the game in terms of building those relationships and helping us see some of those projects through. And then just in the queue, a couple of things coming up in the next week or two. Looking forward to sitting down with Commissioner Nitre and Tyler and Sarah to talk about opportunities for grant funding through the M.D.N.R. grants that are available through April first. That's when their deadline is. So, what can we do to fill some of that gap funding for the opportunities that we've got with the O.D.C. and the Nature Center? And then next Friday, I'm going to be sitting down with the DDA director over in the city of Muskegon. They launched an exterior facade grand improvement program. In the last two or three years, I've seen a lot of great success. So, I'm going to sit down with her, looking forward to seeing what I can learn, what we can adapt, and possibly bring to the city of Hudsonville with our DDA on that. And then going forward, looking into the spring of March and April, all things Village Green. So, I've been extensively researching external funding mechanisms already, and actually even when I was in the interview process, to try to be well-informed to the best that I could be, and looking forward to scheduling some site visits as well in the communities of Birmingham and Royal Oak in May. They've got parks, Centennial Park, and can't remember the name of the one in Birmingham right now, but it's about a five-to-ten minute drive between, between those two communities. So, looking at what those communities did, what their funding mechanisms were, what their partnerships were to build their parks, and how we can utilize their knowledge and best practices as we go forward with the Village Green. And with that, I will take my time, but if anyone has any questions, happy to answer those. And looking forward to working with all of you at the March eighth Strategic Plan Refresh.
Commissioners? Jacob, we're just really glad to have you on board. And to speak what you're doing so articulately, it's important that we are partners with the business community and that we're seen as their companions in the development of our city. We're looking forward to great outcomes, particularly with the Village Green. That comes up routinely every time I talk to Commissioner. They ask me. So, that's as we start to get some momentum there. Obviously, I think one of the big concerns we all have is that funding mechanism, whether or not funding and the future's gonna start to dry up with a different sense about economics and sponsoring these kind of projects. So, we need, really need you on point, supporting the city and representing the city. And I applaud that, and you have all our support.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Anything else? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Are you planning to come here like once a quarter, do you think? What's your cadence, do you think?
Whatever would make the commissioner happy.
Okay. We'll talk about it later. Moving on to new business administration. I'll ask for the motion, please.
I'll make a motion to support Sea Cadets Unit as described in the memorandum of understanding with a review of the agreement after two years.
Second motion. The move is supported. Andrew and I worked on this extensively. We had a lot of review from the leadership in the Sea Cadets. As most of you know, I assume the commanding officer role for the Sea Cadets. We did move all the gear here last Saturday. It was, or Friday, I think it was. Friday, yeah. So, it's all in the building now. We have quite a bit of gear that need to organize. We launched our first meeting with the Sea Cadets, and I think Tyler's shared some of those details with the commission. But it's gonna be a working process, it's gonna be a long program to kind of build our cadets and to build the program. But I'm looking forward to participating with it. Andrew's been so gracious to volunteer to be the executive officer and take on quite a bit of administrative responsibility. So, I think it's gonna be healthy for, not just personally, but professionally and also for the community to look to develop young men and women in leadership roles in their adulthood. So, thank you, Andrew, and thank you, the city, for your support here. Motion's on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to appointments to boards and commissions. Is there a motion?
I think, you got this, Jack?
Make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as listed. Support.
And that would be for Dennis Van Ufflin? Does that say it? Ufflin? Come on, who's Dutch here?
Ufflin.
Ufflin? Do you know him?
Nope.
Okay. I thought all you local.
Aye.
So, that is the one new member for an alternate for board review that will be meeting, I believe, next month, I guess. I don't know whether that, that he'll have to be present, but I reviewed his application. Looks pretty solid. Can we just go with the voice count then? All those in favor of approving the board, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We have a new member for the board review. Thank you. Moving on to Department of Public Works. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize Resolution Number 25-1809, accepting contract Number 24-5603 between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Hudsonville for construction work on Corporate Grove and Corporate Exchange.
I'll second that.
So, move is supported. I'll turn it over to you, Tyler. I know there's a lot of work here, went in a very short time period, and we had to kind of bring it to this commission tonight to get those debt funding. But applaud you and the staff for your expediting this and making it happen. And it represents quite a bit of money.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate your willingness to put this on the agenda in a late manner. What we, the resolution before you, Resolution Number 25-1809, essentially accepts, or the city commission, city of Hudsonville, recognizing that we are willing to accept grant funding. In no way does it find us to it, is not awarding it by any means. As you're aware, this funding was made, the city was made aware of this funding roughly two months ago through what's called LAP, the Local Agency Project Funds, which is federal money. The money became available due to left, or projects coming in under or not seeking fruition, and it was rerouted. And because of our work through the Metro Council, we were able to have a list of projects listed, and the eligibility and the criteria for this one met. So, the grant is for two-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars to be used for construction purposes only. I'm looking at Bob Miller's memo right now. We're looking at roughly a total project cost for construction at four-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, seven-thousand dollars roughly for engineering costs. So, there'll be more down the line as the bid opening takes place. We need to look at those numbers. Andrew and I, as well as Bob, have looked at the budget to be able to take on this project. One thing that's important to keep in mind is this is a matching grant, so we are saving fifty cents on the dollar for construction costs in a road of town that is just lightly traveled, which would be thirty-second half. I know the sarcasm, but, so this is a great opportunity. I appreciate Bob, Dan, and Don De Vries and things in Vanderbrink for working together. Behind the scenes, what this did is it changed our Metro Council project fund requests. Because we're getting money for this, we're opening up some funds through the Metro Council to be used for additional projects. This memo and this resolution really doesn't do due diligence of how much time and effort we had to put on that the eleventh hour, you had to accept these funds, utilize it, but equally, and I would argue most importantly, plan for the future. So, reason why this is a late add is we get three days from the time we receive it to the city commission to make a potential move on it, and it'll require us to call a special meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you again for your willingness to add on to the agenda. If there's any questions, I can take those at this time.
I have one quick question. The estimate is four eighteen. The grant is for fifty percent. Is it capped at two oh nine based on the estimate, or if the estimate goes higher, are we still, is it gonna move with it?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner. Unfortunately, it doesn't move with it. That is the amount of funds that are available. So, any overages on the project cost, the max that they will spend, that we are allocated for the project in terms of external funding is two-hundred-and-nine-thousand. So, there is a chance that the fifty cents on the dollar, depending on where the bids come back in, it could be less than that. And we've been fortunate that where it's been higher than the engineer's estimate, which, I'll be honest, is a conservative estimate to some degree. We would receive less than that fifty cents on the dollar. We would have to come up with those funds, which is something that I'll work with Andrew on, contingency funds, call it.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, is this for thirty-second?
Yes, this is for thirty-second. On the resolution that is in front of you on the.
Corporate Grove and Exchange.
Corporate Grove and Corporate Exchange.
They pulled the old one.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, let me rewind. I apologize.
Should we change the motion?
No, you said, you said the right.
The motion's fine, it's a resolution. Two different projects both receive funding. So, this is the TAF Category B grant funding that the city received through, I'm sorry, gentlemen. And what is this? It's the acceptance of the funds for this. I do not know on the thirty-second avenue project. We'll have to go through the same. They are different funding mechanisms in terms of the distribution. So, this is for Corporate Grove and Corporate Exchange. I apologize. But the numbers still hold true. And Commissioner DeVray, with regards to your question on any overages, that would still apply.
Okay.
Sorry.
We can talk about thirty-second later.
You learned a lot about thirty-second.
I had a conversation earlier in the day with Bob. He wanted to be here, but his son had a wrestling match tonight, and I insisted that that was probably more important, knowing how competitive his son is. But one of the discussions I had with Bob is that there are a lot of parking lots and private roads adjacent to Corporate Grove Drive that when we do these projects, we need to find out whether or not we can let those landowners know about the possibility of piggybacking on us and maybe driving the cost to a more efficient, to a better value for them and for us. Because economies of scale, if they could do work in some of those private drives, particularly like the mobile station up there, the drive, that parking lot in the driveway, that mobile station is really bad, and that needs to be, I would think they would want to get that done if they could to. Any questions? Any discussion? You have nothing there, Mr. Engineer? Hearing none, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes. Moving on to City Manager's Report. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I want to welcome Sergeant Tamiga and Lieutenant De Vries, who's not here, but will be working with staff and attending our staffing meetings Monday mornings. We look forward to continuing our great relationship with the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department, you know, from the folks that I've met here and in other municipal business, just stand-up department all around. And your value appreciated and respected, but the professionalism you bring and the way you work with city staff and the resident community, it is very evident. And I don't think that's something that the Sheriff's Department or those men and women in law enforcement hear enough. So, welcome to the team. Anything we can do for you. Commissioners, I can tell you that I've had a small handful, but pretty long conversations with Sergeant Tamiga as we look to build our relationship as professionals as well. And, you know, off the door, Sergeant Steniga had very good things to say about Sergeant Tamiga. And while it's a small, you know, small sample size, everything is still true. So, happy you're on board, happy to meet and work together, and look forward to our relationship. Exciting news. We've made an offer, an offer accepted regards to a new Terrace Square manager, Brenna Klink. It will start on March 17th. In the last week of the report, HR Director Andrea Rappino mentioned her hiring, her resume. Really looking forward to having her on our staff, joining our team. Looking forward to her energy. And, you know, as we've talked about in the past, you know, making Terrace Square, it's a value, it's a resource, and the entity itself has done some great things for the community. But I'm really excited to see what's next on behalf of the community. So, Brenna will start on March 17th. We'll make sure to get up here for her introduction. If there's any questions, by all means, direct me to Andrea myself.
Is she local? Or is she moving somewhere out there that you know?
She is moved, she will be, she does, she's a, lives in West Michigan right now, but where she's coming from, it'll lose me. Actually, she may be on the east side of the state. I've got a lot of resumes. Caught me on the spot there. But her resume, and I'll be honest, all of our candidates that were interviewed, I was very much impressed with the talent pool that we got. And I think that's a testament to the work that we've done and the work that you've done before my arrival. So, look forward to introducing her to the Terrace Square Advisory Board and you all on later date. The Planning Commission continues to do great work on behalf of the city. We had an interesting discussion at the end of our last week regards to Dorados in regards to building enhancements. There's been some questions from commissioners and members of the public with regards to the Planning Commission's involvement in the design and our building standards of downtown. It's a tough balance for the Planning Commission to balance the design standards set forth in code and the feasibility, and frankly, the cost-effectiveness of our local businesses looking to improve their building and operations. The design standards are something that the Planning Commission, I think, is always willing to look at. We question ourselves to make sure that we're doing it right as we look to enhance the downtown area. But to give an example, signage, setbacks, the material use, all these are important things, whether it's the nuts and bolts of a building or simply for aesthetics. But one of the most important things we can do, well, the most important is safe buildings. But we want to create buildings, design, and businesses that folks want to be a part of, that they want to engage in commerce on. So, we'll continue to work with the folks at Dorado with regards to the building enhancements in trying to find ways where it's cost-effective for the business and our building owner, but equally hits our design standards. So, this is something that we continue to look at. As part of our engagement with McKenna, we'll be looking at a handful of ordinances, which eventually will make their way up to you guys here on the dais for approval. I can tell you that the steering committee and Commissioner Groth, thank you for your participation on that, continues to do great work, and we'll have some updates coming in the next few months. Jacob alluded to site visit today from the MEDC with regards to our redevelopment-ready community, or RRC, participation. And Jacob, thank you for putting that meeting together. It was great to have three professionals with the MEDC to talk about grant opportunities, incentive packages that we can offer for future developments. We didn't discuss the lack of current hotel incentives, which is something that the city has, you know, looked towards for a while now. Jacob and I have made a handful of connections and contacts and a few ideas, but as it relates to hotels right now, with the need of being so housing-focused, it is a challenge. We haven't been formally notified, but we are hearing whispers of a Chipotle opening sometime in April. This is on the record, but it's an off-the-record comment because I do not have this confirmed. But I know that myself and city staff are very much looking forward to the Chipotle. If you haven't driven by, it's right by arrows, down Thirty-second. The building is coming in good shape. They've had a couple of small hiccups, but they're working through it and working alongside city staff. Well, before I get to some project updates, I want to thank everyone who came out to show support for Sergeant Steniga's retirement party last month. Not only is he well-respected, but he's well-loved. Excited for his future opportunities there, but I know it meant a lot to him for those of you that attended. And for those of you that couldn't attend and have reached out, he's very much appreciative. Okay, in terms of project updates, Bob Miller and I had our monthly sit-down, one-on-one with Don De Vries, please in Vanderbrink, yesterday, actually. The Corporate Grove Drive and Corporate Exchange design engineering is roughly sixty percent done. Soil moorings are being conducted this week. As of right now, we'll go out to bid for this project, the resolution you just approved, in March with a bid opening in April. I do not have firm deadlines on those yet. Next month, I'll have more information. By all means, I'll keep you updated there. As I've already mentioned, the Thirty-second Avenue resurfacing from Berry Street to New Holland, we are still waiting to hear back from the State Historic Preservation Office regards to the standards of the project. Normally, when we're just replacing asphalt, we don't have to go through these mechanisms. However, because there's some curb and sidewalk impacts, we have to go through, we know how this is. We have to go through these necessary measures in order to get on the letting with regard to the project bid on M.D.N.R.'s schedule. It's roughly sixty, ninety days to hear back. We submitted this January 7th. Talking to my colleagues and Don, we're looking at every day, every bit of roughly two to ninety days. They're backlog right now. But that's the last hurdle that we have to overcome. There won't be any issues there. I'm very confident of that. But it is a necessary mechanism box that we need to check. The design engineering is ninety-five percent done, so to hear back from Chipotle, we'll go, we will go to bid. Right now, the letting is planned for May 3rd, but I'll have more information hopefully at the next meeting with regards to where we're at. And again, that's with Thirty-second Avenue. We have one last outline, outstanding items regards to the Berry Street realignment. I received the necessary updated survey and right-of-way description with regards to a portion of Berry Street that I'm gonna ask the city commission formally convey to a property owner. This was the plan previously, going back to years ago. What it does is it, we're essentially giving a sliver of unusable property to a property owner. It'll be their responsibility to maintain. It will be on the tax rolls. It does lighten the load for DPW. It does increase the lot size for the homeowner by a small amount. With that being said, he has a street now to the south of his home, where he had a home previously there before the project. So, we did put in some beautiful coniferous trees alongside there. I've seen them. They're nice trees. A lot of planting on those trees, but that'll be an action item that I'll ask the city commission to approve at actual meeting. Finally, I need some, well, second to last, final update with projects. We have not received reimbursement from the Buttermilk Creek Bathroom Project from the MDNR. I made an error in the Michigan Grants Portal system. I checked a box and submitted, but I needed to check one more box and submit it. So, there's gonna be another two to three-week delay with regards to getting our one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the MDNR. I've apologized to Andrew for this. I made a mistake, but I'm meeting here in front of you all. However, I do have the necessary documents now to upload, to get the funds back.
I'd like the estimated missed interest credit to go to Andrew on the next report.
Andrew, if you could lower that interest, sure, that money I'm taking. Andrew, if you could lower that interest rate on that money, I'd appreciate it. Hopefully Treasury takes IOUs. And then finally, you know, I'd give a lot of shout-outs to staff, but it seems when I'm gone and out of state, we get hit with a snowstorm, or frigid temperatures, or vehicles don't start, so thank you, Chief Hessenberg. But what a thank staff for working together near my absence, the most severe storm from January 18th to January 21st, while I watched my alma mater, the Ohio State University crown its 24/12 national championship. So thank you, staff. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our stuff. If there's any questions, I can take those at this time.
Just refresh this, March 8th, that's a Saturday. We all need to box that in our calendars, correct?
Saturday from 9 to 1. Lou Bender will be here. Lou's worked with chief, will be doing a strategic plan update. I submitted, from our work session last month, submitted that information to Lou Bender, as well as some additional information. The mayor and I, I'm hoping to get the mayor on the phone with Lou and myself to kind of plan what it looks like, but staff has their marching orders, and it should be short and sweet. We will provide lunch, brunch of some sorts. I'll connect with Mayor Northrop. We'll do some kind of food.
Did it at Terrace Square?
We'll be at Terrace Square with all the department heads, as well as members of the commission.
Larry, how many of you had of those meetings? Six, seven? Very good. Do you have anything?
I have nothing. Nothing else to add, no.
Dave? Larry? Yeah?
Yes.
Somebody, thank you.
Well, you connected, you know, all of us Dutch folk ought to know each other. I'm just wondering if trash can fire people know each other.
Just asking. Chief, did you set him up for that? I don't know what you, I don't know what you speak to, but. I think there still might be a video out there someplace.
I think I have a copy of it.
I don't know, sir. Heather, Jill?
Unless you want me to say what I said in my email.
I don't think so. I think we all are comfortable with the agenda and how it lays out now, so thank you for that work there. I think it flows a lot better, it's much more efficient.
I did not mention in my email that I added the recommended motion wording, instead of just, that way you guys can adjust as needed, as we've done in the past.
And any consent agenda item that any commissioner wants to take out of the consent agenda item, it's always your privilege to call for that. Don't ever think that you would ever be pushed back on from a staffer from me that you wanted to pull something out of the consent to discuss separately in the agenda, so. Anything else from the staff and the audience?
Jill, I appreciate the new layout, thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
We are adjourned, thank you.